We're here to say officially over the meeting. Um, and you would be right in. Let me. That's what I hear. I played really big. You could thought of being out of escape America. And you were wrong, which depends on nation under our middle is well. The delivery test. I just want to say thank you to everybody who's coming. Uh, it's an important issue. Uh, we have folks currently down in St. Albans. I mean, we just thought we would be staying in St. Albans. Uh, also the neighborhoods around, if you got folks to put leave go on uh, by school district here as well. Uh, I don't know if we're going to have any solutions, but I do know when we walk out, we'll just uh, didn't already know this complicated, complex issue. Uh, without a whole lot of press. So I'm gonna turn it over to Dave, our stormwater guy, stormwater director.
I'm gonna take a seat. Thank you all for coming. Um. You know, I wanted to have this meeting because I hear a lot of. We get a lot of phone calls about issues in the Tanglewood area, in the Greysbrook area. Water off of the Sash, and we've even met with some of the St. Tech folks. So we understand that there is a problem in this area. So I wanted to get everybody in the same room so we could talk about it. Cause the way I see it, it's not a Greysbrook problem. It's not a Tanglewood problem. It's not a St. Tech problem. It's not just a Sash problem. It's an overall global. This area's got issues. So um. So that's kind of an introduction to that. I also wanted to, just a little housekeeping here. If anybody needs a restroom, just down the hall here and to the right. Feel free to get up and use it if you need to. Um, I'd like to go around the room and have everybody introduce themselves and let us know who you're with. Uh, which community or or what agency? Uh, just so that everybody knows who who all is here. But I I recognize most of the people here, so I know that we've got representation from everybody. So anyway, I'm Dave Allerton. I'm the Public Works Director and Town Engineer. I started here last October, and this has been an issue from day one. So let me pass it over here to Julie.
Good. Awesome.
Kevin Brakes, part of Tanglewood. Shane Leonard, also at our table. Yeah, standard with the St. Albans town. That brings like.
Steve Wren, for the St. Albans, very large.
John Hall, St. Assistant Director of the Department of Town and Public Safety.
He's pushing, he was with St. Albans very largely, so he's. Forty eight, we perhaps can stay in St. Albans there.
Uh, Sean Haddad, Mr. Smith.
I'm Maggie Shaw, the Director of the Division of Public Safety.
Uh, my name is Kyle Partner, with the Vermont U.C. of transportation. I'm a technician now at the official office over here in St. Albans.
Yes, I am Director of planning development of the city of St. Albans tonight, and all of our rest.
Eric Madden, Solidaire Director at St. Albans Town and Administration.
Boy Crows, right on the other end.
Uh, Dan Gray, Paul. Morris, we're going to Greysbrook.
Jason Booth, Aldrich and Elliott, uh, work for both city and the town when several of these storm water issues.
Brian McGarry.
So this is perfect. This is exactly the kind of meeting we wanted to have here with all of the the people involved. So um. Like I mentioned, we want to talk some about the the Tanglewood, Greysbrooks, St. Tech, and what we call the Sash, the St. Albans State Highway. You might also hear us refer to our phosphorus control plan. We'll call it a PCP. Um, and then we've got flow restoration plans for two of our impaired brooks, which is Rug Brook and Stevens Brook. So if we say FRP, PCP, you might understand that. And we might also mention a practice. So the state calls any stormwater infrastructure that we might place in a best management practice. So if we call something a practice, it would be something like the infrastructure, like a pond or a um, gravel wetland or drainage swales. All of those would be some kind of a stormwater practice that we would use. So just want to make sure everybody understands that while we get into this. So make sure all this is working here. So kind of the agenda, I wanted to go through, do some introductions. I've got some good maps um, or plans that we want to show of just kind of the general stormwater in the area. And um, we'll discuss some of the specific areas too, like we've already mentioned. And I also want to add Otter Avenue to this discussion because while there's no specific projects down there, they are below Tanglewood, and they pick up the overflow from Tanglewood. And I've got some pictures of that too. And then we just want to brainstorm some ideas. Um, Jason Booth is here from Aldrich and Elliott. He's worked on the Greysbrook project, the Tanglewood project, and the Sash project, the lower end of the Sash project, I guess. Um, so he knows a lot about the stormwater in this area too, so he can be a good resource for us today. We can touch a little bit on the financing, but we're not going to solve any financing issues today. Um, we're in discussions with the state with um, the stormwater project program manager down there. Uh, we've got the Secretary of the Agency of Natural Resources is now involved and is putting together a briefing, I guess, for Governor Scott. I found all this yesterday. And and we're going to try and get them to come in and talk to the Select Board at some time, at which point it will be a warned meeting. We can get, it'll probably be a fairly big, big meeting once we we can get that in place and once they're ready to come here. And then we'll just open it up for the discussion. Um, like I said, I've been here since October. Every time I go out into this area, I see something new. Um, and I'm sure that the people sitting in this room know more about things that happened in their neighborhoods than we do, because we don't go out there all the time. So any information like that is always helpful to us, and then we can talk about next steps. Guys, let me back up a little bit here. So the picture on the right, that's the water coming off of the Sash that flows between two of the homes right into Tanglewood. So there's a tremendous amount of water that's coming off of there, but I don't want to say it's just from the Sash, because one of these other plan that I'll show up there shows the water. It, you know, it starts up in Sam Smith's field, goes through Greysbrook, picks up more water, goes through a corner of St. Tech, picks up some more water, picks up water off the Sash, and then it just comes right underneath. It it follows the Sash for a little bit, and then it dumps right into Tanglewood. And that's kind of where where it ends them. Um, and then at the bottom end of Tanglewood, uh, when I get to the map, I'll show you. It turns around, there's a curve down there where the water overflows then, and it dumps onto Potter Avenue and inundates those folks. Okay, so this is one of the backyards there in uh, Tanglewood too, where the water's coming through. And you can, you can see that it's just completely flooded in there. And this is down on Potter Avenue after it's already overflowed or gone past Tanglewood. And I do know that uh, that culvert, there's a cross culvert there on the right-hand side of that picture, that the town would be responsible for cleaning out. We do need to get in there and clean it out. As soon as we clean it out, it goes on to private property, and there is a stormwater drainage in there that is overgrown with with vegetation that needs to be cleaned out. And then that's a whole nother issue we have around town here too, is that we can work in the right of way, but we can't work outside of the right of way. So when the right of way is clean, the private conveyances are not necessarily cleaned out, and residents don't know how to properly do those. They don't want to spend the money. So that's just another issue that we need to address. So this is, this came from, I believe it was from the um, the flow restoration plan from Rug Brook, and it kind of breaks up the areas into different sub-basins and where some of the water is flowing. And I can zoom in right here. So Greysbrook is right in here. So you can see that some of the water flowing through Greysbrook and heads down through the St. Tech area and gets over into the Sash there. This here is the, what they call the the Tanglewood sub watershed area that we're trying to remediate. And it's my understanding that the existing um detention pond down there was sized for Tanglewood. It's not sized to take all the extra flow from um, from the Sash. And when I say from the Sash, that means from the Sash and everything up gradient of that. Um, and then there's also another project. We met with Chip Sawyer from the city, and there's this lower um, Sash project that is going to take water from the lower end of the Sash and run it underneath Route Seven to a new gravel wetland over there off of Nason Street by the railroad tracks. So we know that the existing detention pond there in Tanglewood, it it can't get any bigger. It can't be sizing it bigger because there's not enough room to make anything bigger there. So we're probably going to be looking at other areas where we can slow down this stormwater and and hold it back. Maybe it's, maybe it's a area up on St. Tech. I'm just throwing out ideas. If it's an area up on St. Tech, maybe it's getting V-Trans to help us put in some ponds along the Sash to slow it down and keep it out of Tanglewood before it eventually goes underneath St. Tech. But we're definitely limited on the amount of space that we have to put this kind of infrastructure. So that's why we need to get everybody together. You know, we can't, you know, push this on anybody. And we also got to find the money, and the money has always been an issue for stormwater. You know, stormwater's only got so much money. Everybody's out there trying to get the same pot of money, but yet they're trying to force us to get all this work done in our phosphorus control plans and flow restoration plans, to get all this stuff done by 2036. It's gonna take a tremendous amount of money, and that's not money that St. Albans residents can absorb and and easily fund to do all these projects. I know there's a loan program out there. Loans are not necessarily the way to go for all these projects. Um, anyway, that that's another discussion that we will continue to have with the state moving forward. We're not going to solve the financial problems today. So this is another um, map. I think we got this out of the, I think Chip set this one, and it came from, I think it was another one of the flow restoration plans. But it also, it shows the area up around um, Greysbrook and how it goes through the, call it the forested area of St. Tech up there. And I'm, I'm pretty sure, and Derek, correct me if I'm wrong, but half of the water that comes down from Greysbrook goes to the the north, and then goes through your pond there by Route Seven, and then there's a portion of the flow that goes over um, along the Sash and then underneath. Yep, yep. Um, and then it also shows the the lower portion of the the Sash project and that treatment practice or gravel wetland would be down in here by the railroad tracks. Um, so this was a map when I initially contacted V-Trans about this, saying we needed to look at the Sash and where all this water was coming from. Uh, you know, they essentially said that they built this stuff 60 years ago, and and it's working as it was designed. But you know, something 65 years ago definitely needs maintenance. So I, he sent me the, I guess, all the colored lines here, because that shows their infrastructure. And I drew the yellow on here where the water was coming off the Sash, going into Tanglewood between these two homes, coming down here, spinning around, I guess, Tanglewood to dump into their pond, and then the overflow going down here onto Potter Ave. And also on Potter Ave, that's where that one picture was that I showed you. Um, it goes through that culvert and into the the drainage ditch over there. And it's my understanding that drainage ditch does not go into the Tanglewood detention pond. It goes along the side, but then it all comes together over here in Rug Brook somewhere in this area down in here. So I'm not sure how relevant these are, but I had a couple of maps from Greysbrook. These might be old plans, but I found these, and it said that there was a potential of putting a couple of stormwater practices um, on the outside of Greysbrook, one here, but I guess this leads to Stevens Brook, this side does, and this side then goes to Rug Brook. And and this one shows the detention pond over here on the St. Tech property. Um, I'm not sure if this was a draft or if these are even relevant anymore. Okay.
So that's changed a little bit. Where treatment practice in the sort of northern back corner of the center. And that will be down.
That was back up in here. Yes.
Just along the edge of Stevens Brook in the wooded area in the back.
Yep.
The idea, the goal there is in that off of St. Ed property.
It's my understanding that the cemetery was not in favor of this kind of a a stormwater sharing partnership. Okay, so yeah, that one, we're, we're still need to figure out what we're gonna do. Well, and again, it's, it's globally, a global stormwater issue here. It's not just Greysbrook, it's not just St. Tech, it's not just the Sash, it's everybody. Then I got a couple of pictures to share of Tanglewood. So um, thank you Shane for giving us some of these pictures. This one is on the south side of Tanglewood, where it goes between a couple of homes and then right into the stormwater pond over here. And then this is, I think, right in front of Shane's house. Um, this is all the water coming off of the Sash, essentially inundates the um, the ditches there. The the culverts clearly cannot handle any of the flow that is coming through there. And then this is a picture of one of the the cross culverts that comes underneath the Sash. It's flowing full right there, and then it goes down the Sash, and then it cuts across into Tanglewood, not not much further down here. So. Hold on. Kyle, I'm glad you're here, but I wish there were some other of the V-Trans folks here too to talk about this with. But at some point, we will get them in the room with us, and we can all discuss this together. I mean, and again, we're not pointing fingers at anybody here. We just need to, we just need to come up with a solution that's best for everybody if we can. So that's really all the slides I had. So that's kind of a a general discussion of the stormwater in this, in this area. Um, I'd be happy to entertain any questions, and I'd certainly be happy to hear any other issues that you guys are seeing that I may not be aware of at this time.
Dave?
Yes.
There's a go. And um. This here. It's filled in. There's a cornfield there. It used to be a big knoll here, and this is kind of a natural. Um. Retention pond, well, before the interstate came in, when I was a kid. And then the farmer, Ed Smith, at one point, throws this knoll out because he never could use that area. And I think that probably affected what was once a natural water retention here. Same thing when you cross over, you'll see all the weeds down in there off of Ridge View.
Yep.
That's kind of a natural retention area. You can go messing with that stuff. Um. You're asking for trouble. Almost seems to make more sense to try to go in here and put a, a big retention pond type situation there with a slow outlet that slows some of this water coming down into the air, so you don't hit that, that river.
Okay, well, well, that's good information. It was like, we didn't know that before.
Dave, just, we're not having any shitness. In fact, in fact, of course, if you have, I think that there were some practices proposed in that area.
He did a little reliance, did it, oh, the practice of the F R P, we do. So if there is, and each of the shades, what little subwaters then as a practice associated with serving, and depending on purple, pink, blue. Um, so there is actually a project in the F R P close to that area.
You're talking about something right in here.
Yeah.
I think there's a natural, natural or or building needed at.
There was still, yeah, a bit, but there's.
I, I think there's still a sway to it. There is.
There is sway, there is.
Yeah, it's not anywhere near the capacity. Understood, and I think that's, you know, part of the concept of the F R P was that we can find that can be more of a, more capacity and then, and then more useful space.
And that's all being farmed now, right?
Right.
So we would have to figure out how to size something and.
Sash, and I think the intent of the F R P was to try to save the right of way. Um, it's not farmed all the way in.
Okay.
That, that is for sure.
Yeah, there's probably a little concept, and for it, do you think you see that, or?
Good.
So, so just to understand better, the work that would be done, the practice that would be installed there, would be not on private land? It's like that the issue that the owner of that, wouldn't want to give that up.
It's not impossible, but you would have to use, like, we got, on our list project, we have a couple where I think we eleven, eleven, and we can say, hey, what are we gonna think to do it? But we've really got to work out. Some of the, some of the stormwater projects are proposed to private land. You know, it's something you'd have to follow up on, if you're actually gonna do it.
But you could, but could you conceptually design a practice and stay off of the private land where that could, you, you create, made it look a little funky, but.
People are doing it, it's long, it's, yeah. And I guess there's two options there is that you run into spacing and size issue. So if you're living in two, just within the right way, you're only gonna be able to get so much capacity.
Correct.
Um, but it's definitely doable. So look at concepts that, because that's part of the F R P.
I think we talked to the landlord. That's Bob. Nothing wrong there still, I think, because it's still low, but the passage may be built, not at, you know. I know the guy, and I think that we want something that be worked out, because we've got future development plans for that now. A lot of that water, but that goes in there.
I think, I think that there's a number of discussions that would probably need to occur with that, taking the property owner on that parcel of land. Uh, on the west of the side of that parcel, which must begin with Greysbrook. There's a significant drainage ditch on the backside of this field, where a lot of flow from the fields came across. It is actually finding the right, which ultimately finds in St. Ed in this whole drainage area of the pocket. And so that's another area that might be addressed. Just to talk, you mentioned a little bit about the individual practices. The reason that that Greysbrook and Tanglewood are based backwards, right? So you've got flow coming from further up in the, in the system, why are we building that first, like, city, town being that first? Supposedly starting on the bottom end and working up. It's a little bit, they say out of order, but some of it is driven by permits that, existing permits that these developments have, stormwater. Uh, and so they trigger the need to move all the new and design in that particular location. Maybe before necessarily you would say, let's go up to frame and pull this off, and then we go to the next lot of the base and pull this off. So that's some of the reasons why Tanglewood has gone to a point, when you look at the permitting for these projects, you, you know, the permit is very specific to the property itself and development itself. So when, when Dave talks about this practice in Tanglewood, how it's sized not to handle all the flow above and going through the practice, that practice is sized to treat the runoff generated from Tanglewood associated with that current. Everything else that comes in and comes through there at some point, and this goes for other practices as well, essentially it passes. So that gets passed through the system, and it ends up at the, the next destination, which ultimately is either Rug Brook or Stevens.
But with that said, does that make sense? What's that? That, that you would look at project, in, in exclusive to the project? I, I understand the permit that.
Yeah, that's educational, but from a logistical, practical point of view, don't, don't you walk and deal with the water coming? I, I, you, you would, but it doesn't always work out that. And that, I mean, that's kind of a, you know, planning aspect, uh, you know, what priority becomes for the community. Uh, and your funding is coming from at times, so it, it, you're, you're absolutely right. And it would, that is the right way you think, you would get off the, up the other, or if you're doing the downstream. It doesn't necessarily know all this work that I don't think it speaks about all of it.
Yeah, everything is tied to a permit. So if somebody comes in to build a, put a development in, they have to deal with the water on their site. But a lot of times they don't consider what's coming onto that site from other permitted entities. And you know, the, the rules change. I think the rules have gotten, obviously the rules get tighter every year. Um, and you know, 20, 30, 40 years ago, there probably weren't any rules, and people were just doing whatever they needed to do to move the water off of their property and push it onto the next person, I guess. Um, and we still get some of that with people wanting to put in culverts in their front yard ditches because they don't want the ditch out there. So, so yeah, I mean.
The whole drainage of this side of town. You know, when the interstate was built, and that was all burned and up and above. So they built a dam across the bottom of that hill from Fairfax to Walton. Took all the water that she did down that hill, and finally did a bunch of culverts to go over to the roadside. And, and then drained into prime land, prime ditches, and there were no buildings there. Didn't make any difference at that point.
Yes.
Today, it's all a good building interstate, because of all of the ground now. We never had to worry about it till all these houses got, developments got, got in the watershed of the interstate.
So it only makes sense to go back to where those culverts are coming underneath the interstate and and trying to deal with it there as soon as we can.
So that's, I'm, I'm thinking it's on, yeah. So that's, um, how it's part.
Yes, yep. Yes, Derek.
So just one of my, because we came really close, like, flooding out a couple of times in the school. If you can go back to that MS four map, they.
That's one?
Um, yeah. Now. Okay, so we ended up having a pile of water right at the back of the school. And I mean, it was probably about three inches away from going through the doors. So I ended up following the water out, and I actually have a pretty long video of it. What I saw was this, the majority of it was coming down through here. And if you see on that satellite map, you can see where the darker green is. There's a culvert right here. It was coming down through, it was going underground, it was coming up into the middle of Greysbrook. And I'm really sorry to see something like that, and you guys having to deal with it. It came through there, went into this culvert, and it dumped out right over here onto St. Ed. When I first got there in 2007, there was um, a small ditch where it came through because there's an 18-inch culvert that comes out of there. And over the years, it went from that to something that we ended up putting a 30-inch culvert just to get it through so that we could have a cross-country running path out there. And it, it just grew so big that my concern is, if we do something here, this is all become basically swamp because of this water. And it's, it's a low point. You know, if something was done up here or even further, like you were saying, up above here, to mitigate that, instead of it all coming down and then all of us having to deal with it. If there was something here, it couldn't control flow over it. But I know it's private land, but dealing with it at the school level, it is pretty difficult.
Derek, the water comes in the northeast corner of the park, is it?
Yeah.
Where, does it go towards the pond, the pond, does it go down like that?
It travels down. Um, so it goes in here, and then it goes right down, you can almost, there's almost a natural uh, gully down through here, and it. Gully down through here and it comes out of the back of our soccer fields and goes around to, uh. So the holding ponds.
That's the area I was referring to, the backside of this, pretty significant issue.
I think that one map showed that water going out to Stevens.
It doesn't.
Yeah. That's what we're. What I'm just discovering now. I think that whole, this whole area is Sam Smith's properties, all right, so.
It's not, it's not Brian, hang on. That field is not.
Well, this shows. Potential practices up in here, right? Well, they just redid this one too in this corner, right? Yeah.
Read along the sash, too, read along the sash.
These two here. Yep, and this is the one they just did. Up in here, on this one, yep. Yes. That's a good question, that might be a good time to address these problems. That'd be a really good time to address them. Cause if they're gonna. Redo. This right here, they're gonna have to control stormwater somehow, so it would have to be part of that. Design, and I think there is a, a meeting coming up in the next couple of weeks with those folks. Um, can't remember what date it is. Yeah.
So, so along those lines, like, the state says that the system is. Performing as it was engineered before, but I wonder if that's in lieu of like. Pretty well documented that the intensity of our rainstorms. Have, have gotten way more intense and more frequent over the last third year. That was put in sixty years ago. I, I would, I would think that, I don't know how robust their system is to handle. You know, six, four inch rainstorm, some whatever it is, I don't know, but I, I had seen the data that says. That our rainstorms are intensifying.
Yep.
Like, I think it's like, I don't know, worse than sixty percent.
Yep. Yes, I agree with that, I did ask them if they, to, to see whatever plans they had for back then, if they had them, but they said they couldn't find any.
I know in, in my role act, hopefully, where they revise all their models. Because, because of the old model.
Yep. Yep. Well, at some point, we will have a meeting with them and we'll go through all this together, cause it. Like I mentioned earlier on, we're all in this together, it's not just. Just one entity out there that needs to solve this, and tangledwood certainly can't solve all the water coming onto your property from above.
Would, would be any way, I'm, I'm just. I go to the, I think density issues in this area, is there a way to get it? And I understand the permits are all certain particular things, but is there any way to get it, like a special designation, get it looked at? In a, in a broader view, the, the worst thing that could happen is say we go do tangledwood. And it doesn't work because we're unable to account for the water coming on, that makes, like, that's a dangerous place to be.
Definitely.
If there's any way to. To get it put together so that, so that we're forced to deal with it. In its entirety, so that when we get done, it may take a year or two longer, but at least when it's done, it works.
Right, that's, that's kind of the gist of this meeting, to kind of get that ball rolling on, on that kind of a larger project, yeah. Yep. Yes, Jeff.
I was just gonna say, I think that one next step here might be. We have an M S four permit, V trans has a T S four permit. And they have a couple of folks who work on that and they're trying to plan for the stormwater product that is on us box. Um, I think it might be time to bring them in and say, you know, this F R P is actually, it's also the V trans.
Yes.
The list of projects in there that V trans is supposed to do as well, and it might be a good chance. To get with those folks to say, what are your plans for the rest of the project? Or can we go out there and have a consultant verify what the current range is? Because it looks like what's happening on this side of the wire should now might not be a great idea. Um, or maybe that little stretch that buys that much water in tangledwood, but. Um, as a laborer, it seems like it's getting one of them.
Yes. Taylor, Taylor something, Tyler.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll reach out to them, Jen, Jen did contact me and say that she had something else going this morning and she couldn't make it, so. I'll ask her to come into the office and we'll go through stuff with her directly. Uh, Jason, you had something?
So much similar with Jim's, where, where it's, you know, this is. The F R P sort of created that global look at the area. And, and if you go through the, the full F R P, it identifies. It had identified the practices on a, on, you know, a higher level, ten thousand, twenty thousand, twelve levels identified. These areas and identified practices for all the parties involved in these areas, so. And, and this is sort of that dialogue. I, on, on, on a certain level, that you can use as that dating tool and prioritize maybe. But I think Jim's suggestion of getting V trans as well is like, they have responsibility to save the farm.
Yep, that's a great idea and definitely something we'll move forward with. Anybody else have any other thoughts? So my next steps will definitely get in touch with Jen and set up a meeting with her to go over things. Um. Yep, we just gotta. Start from the beginning again, it seems like. Yeah, no, that's a good idea. Any other thoughts? That's a good question, we'll find out in a couple of weeks when we talk to them, I think they're, they're updating the initial plan. Or the initial feasibility study, I guess if we have, you know, one with it just being a regular four-way intersection and one with it being the roundabout. In my opinion, that's a perfect spot for a roundabout. I mean, there's certain warrants that these things have to meet to qualify for certain kinds of. Engineering designs and I'm, I'm pretty confident that that one will be a good one for a roundabout. Yes.
So what would be the next step after this meeting?
Yeah, so I'll be meeting with the state. Um, and we'll start opening those discussions again, we'll talk about the sash and, and I'll certainly bring up, uh, those other two. These two, those two projects right here along the sash. Um. I, I don't know if that's something that we can put on. In the state's right of way there or not, or if we need to approach the landowner. And say we need X number of acres, I don't know what the sizes of these things might be at this point. Um, but that would be the next step is definitely get V trans at the table and start talking with them in addition to talking with everybody here. Cause it's not just the people in this room, like I said, it's, it's, it includes them too. I know it doesn't solve anything in tangledwood for now.
Appreciate the opportunity to hear.
Yep. I think it was time.
I'm just looking at the map, plan purpose of the heat cell, both sides. Is that water, how does that water? Where does that water go, like is that going down the sash or is that giving into?
I just wanted to, just wanted to look at the, uh, the legend up there, wasn't sure what this. That right there is a.
If you, what thing that just, just that right away with that much water?
Yeah.
That's what I'm, that's, it's all going that way and then.
Looks like it's crossing here in one place, not there. Yeah, we definitely have some more. Uh, yeah, okay, uh, Bellevue carriage up at the top, yeah. But that is a good point, Jeff, we need to figure out where it's actually coming in and coming underneath the. I, identify those places specifically, where it's coming underneath the highway there. And start to manage it back in there.
I think you gotta look uphill, I mean. I know the state put those two retention points in, but they did one by the on-ramps and the bone dry nine minutes at the time. They honestly, it didn't affect the literally amount of water that came down from the neighborhood in front of the house. It just, zero difference, so I don't know where it's coming from, but. Wherever it comes from up here, we should figure out and start playing with that and we'll all shed it down.
Yep. Yep. I might add that the newspaper said I could, that the water comes from French Hill over here, that was not correct. I did not say that. We'll, we'll get that in a minute, sir.
Off the modeling shop or that could be by our.
I'm, I'm sure there is. Say the state has the model, I'm sure. Yeah.
Since when they do the modeling, they want to do it there. Because that's.
Yep.
When I track everything out. You're about three inches away. Well, I caught a frame of the grain, it was awesome, because it was coming up to those rocks and it was probably about an inch and a half over. But it was. Eight years, so that was a good. But definitely dealing with it uphill is going to take a lot of it off.
Well, I think it's hard now, if you can throw a retention mark over the place, but not that in where the water's coming from, and where it's traveling.
Right, exactly, their engineering is, well, actually, we, because we're in the point right now, we've got to do something. Because we've done our new permit and, or our ninety fifty and, uh. It, you know, what they engineer is also the data here, what they see. But they haven't seen when it comes down. And the other thing is, the engineer that they came up with is whether being, uh. They're gonna have, uh, what is it, what chip is filtered, that'll have to replay the statement.
Can, can you explain a little bit about, I'm not familiar with like. Look at the engine, like, what was the process that you got a permit and some of the engineers, something, and they came up with that, like. Did that go out a bit or did someone just show away a door with that or how did, how did, how did that?
So it seemed maybe that anybody that's on a creative permit, they had an old stormwater. The state went out to, um. A company to oversee it. That company has decided, uh, engineers for certain projects around the state.
That was for the schools, yes, yeah.
So we ended up getting, uh, assigned otter tree engineering. And, you know, they just show up with a plan, they don't, they come up, they, they go through the information that they answered. And they come up with a plan. And, did they take input from them or did they just come up with a plan? They did, we did a full cycle review of that and, and, and I, I took them and basically went through what I told them. You know, this is where I have seen the water. And I also got invited to the Grace Brook, which was really nice because I've seen what their problems is. And I know that their issues can be mitigated uphill. My problem is, is they wanted to, well, the old M S four, they wanted the same beholding pond down, uh, down in the. Backboard was, well, the problem is that site is really, really low. It's not like there's any way that you can control flow to one of the roads. You know, I, I'm, I'm nothing but a dumb phone, so, you know, but I, I do know that water does go down. And when, when I tracked this all out and when, when, um. That's you, right, that's you, okay, sorry, Dave. So, I actually got a question back, they had a, they had a good plan to kind of defer things. Because we've seen pipes come up on our, on our side of. Don't know why they're there, but all of a sudden, just maybe other issues at Grace Brook was happening. Uh, I, I thought the idea of getting it over, um, on the cemetery side. In an area that was already. Would, would have helped us out a lot, but, uh. They're not, they're not gonna do it, so we've got to come up with. And my, my thought is it's gotta be mitigated uphill of the rest. And my, my thought is, it's got to be mitigated uphill of the rest. And possibly defer, uh.
Jason, do you know there's a pond right over in here?
Is that, uh?
Is that, it's, it's west of?
Yes, behind, uh, what's the, what's the?
There's the Legion.
Yeah.
I was just wondering, who's responsible for that one? Is that a Greysbrook one? Is it a, it's?
No, it probably is, um, um, they had to build it around the bell.
Yeah.
That one, Pizza Gal?
Oh, Pizza Gal, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to add that Fort Avenue, whatever, that ditch is on the, the block on the north side. So, everything has to come through Greysbrook, through the, all of it. If we opened up that ditch, run it down alongside the, into the rock, and we ran that much better, we're going to get that open too. And that, that's the problem.
Why is it?
Good idea.
So that, that, I'm careful that, of the callers, they put in when they shut down Fort Avenue. That, that, I'm careful with all of that, we put in when they cut.
Yeah, it is.
You had to pull that call, you, you know, the, the bridge here.
Originally, there's a plant, we lived in back in fifty, beginning to develop the ice. The grains are going to the northeast corner, down over to the cemetery. It was never done that way. I don't know who made the check, because if you look at the plan here, it runs it down to the point, and they were very, very good at the cemetery. It's been five. They literally have it. I will give it, because, okay, I don't know who did that, you look back.
Okay.
It's, it's for air nation.
Yep.
Pretty bad.
Okay. Yeah, I have had calls from people on Fort Avenue Extension over here too, and people on Twin Court.
Yeah.
With stormwater problems. So, you know, the issue's also running this way. It's not just in here. I mean, it's, like you say, it's the whole area.
That's Greysbrook, that runs down near your job. There's a lot in that Greysbrook, that's the whole Greysbrook.
Yeah.
That's, that's lot you're saying?
It is, right there between Fort Avenue and Greysbrook Road. Right there, that stops, that ditch stops there, so it all runs across the river, oh, runs across that car. If you next turn, you, you, when, and I'm going to bend, and you do. You know, our water has to be there. And we've got one of them, you know, to bend where, we, if we had some of our, look, the water, first time do, because it's all flowing, and it's raining, it came across more than this was called, becoming a river. That's, that's part of the problem. You know, it's a thing. I hear that you've got that there. It'll come again. You want to, you, you, a lot of water, you do it.
But is your property here?
Yes, yes, it's, and again, when you look at ads, you look for the greens, as it looks like, the, the plan is similar to, uh, we use something, but they're right. They're enjoying that water. A lot there in the corner. Tired of them. You put a jump, or you put a thumb, that's it. And then it comes back. Just an idea. Not an expert, my thought, grass, it can draw the bottom of the water.
Yep. We like ideas.
Right, right, it's not, I didn't, it was all ahead. If you look at it, it's water.
They've grown for years.
Yes.
Um, another thing, by Fort Avenue there, and the cornfield and Greysbrook, there's a huge water main going through there. Yes, just through, just east of the road, of the, uh, over, it's like a twenty-four inches along the city. So, that comes down to the rest of ours, you know, that's, we, we, and then I wanted, you know, people who have property around that could be, who want to buy the property. Is there some way to buy it, or, I don't know?
That, I mean, that's always an option, buying property to use for stormwater practices. If, if, it can be decided that.
Must develop.
Right.
Something must, get that, get some of that.
Right.
Cemetery, or they were gonna, they were gonna lose the credentials to sell some lots, and say, I'm losing the credential, something else. Um, they're all good people, you know?
Did the cemetery get offered money for a?
No, not, not that, at that time. All day, there was the interest. And the.
Yes, yeah.
And so the cemetery GID was a town red, uh, so it wasn't really good town, but they, there's how, what we come to, red cemetery. The area proposed for the, the practice in cemetery, including is currently a wooded wet, low, as there are indicated, low area, that I think is pretty inconvenient for them to utilize for, for parents. That's kind of what shows that area, right next to the road, it's not really usable.
What was the square footage of that area? And I might dig that out and approach the cemetery again.
A little bit, yeah, there was some. And I, I think that was, I'm not sure, but I think that that was some of, uh,
Sure.
Apparently. Losing you know, cemetery is like, is, is, uh, running into a lot of financial problems, they just maintain it. You know, some way to compensate that.
Yep.
I want that along, you know? Going into, just the cemetery, or people that are not even?
We do. Another next step. At the cemetery, in the cemetery? No, I haven't. Okay. Any other comments?
All about.
Yes.
Been a long, very long discussion, I feel.
I allotted an hour and a half to the meeting. I figured it would only be an hour, and we're about an hour in, so, so that's good. So if there's no other comments, I mean, my takeaways are, I'm gonna meet with V-Trans, we'll meet with the cemetery folks. Uh, we'll go out and keep looking at stuff and see what we can do to keep moving this forward. Uh, we already know we're gonna be meeting with A and R about money issues, and and that could kill everything, I don't know. We'll just, we just move forward like we're gonna be able to move forward. Yep.
Gration.
Okay. Oh, one more.
Yeah, I have one more question. If you put a storm, dirt, uh, pond somewhere, these properties, they're not, that that, like, down, and can they, can they, there's like a payment, or?
Yeah, right. Yeah, right now, for the, the stormwater systems that we've taken over or absorbed into our MS four permit, we pay the annual fees for them. But the individual residents or HOAs are responsible for the maintenance of it. So that, I think that's how it's set up now, with all of the agreements that we have. Yes. If, if the town ends up purchasing something, then we would take it over and, and maintain it. And I, I understand that residents and HOAs don't, don't know how to manage stormwater ponds, drainage ditches, swales, um, and, and that's, that's a big issue we're dealing with all around town. Yep.
Say, it's wrong, that is a pit, if you don't figure it out, the nearest, that's why I asked. I can fit me when I'm not stuck, because the dream, for the school, we think about buying five thousand dollars, it's not a dream, but I can't see.
It's complicated fast. Yep. Yeah, I guess that's it. Unless anybody has any other questions? Look, we need to formally close the meeting, Brian, or? Okay. Thank you all for coming. Really appreciate it, and we'll be in touch if, if and when there are future meetings.